This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, the regular meeting. Our first item is Paul and Francine Tremontano. Oh, okay. The items that are postponed tonight, because I always forget. Number three, seventeen Bryan Road. Number seven, the Stanwyck School and Greenwich Country Day. And that's it. And on the fours are postponed to? Yes, it is. Charles Ziga at one twenty-two Cedar Cliff Road. And with that, the first item, once again, Paul and Francine Tremontano.
And who's seated?
I'm gonna do that in two seconds. Okay, you guys can just run the meeting. Okay, Paul and Francine Tremontano for the fourth time, two oh four Otter Rock Drive, for a final coastal site plan, and Ms. Goss is seated for Mr. Levy.
Dennis Verandt.
Thank you. And Dennis Verandt?
Yes.
Okay.
Melissa Clawberg for the applicant, Ivy Barnum-O'Meara. From what I understand, what was discussed at the briefing, that seems the only issue which remains on this application is the treatment of the open space. So there are two items I just wanted to touch on, on the open space. One is that there was a comment from the Conservation Commission that three trees were removed. I'd like to submit a letter from Cutting Edge Landscaping and Design that says the trees were diseased and a danger to local residences, and that's why they were removed. And I have a photo also of the trees.
A danger to local residents? That wasn't what the Conservation Department saw. And there's no residence anywhere near it.
Yes.
Ma'am? There's not, no residences here to be endangered.
Did they cut the right trees down?
They cut the three down, but they cut them because they were diseased.
Well, I think that based on that, this concept of it being a danger to local residences when there are no residences in sight, that...
Maybe he meant residence as opposed to residence.
No, it says residence as a house.
I don't know, that he has an English degree from Harvard?
Well, we would still ask you to replace them.
Yes, that's fine, but just wanted to let you know that they removed that, not as a whim.
And I think you also heard the discussion about the open space and where it stands and the removal of the driveway. So does your client have response to that?
We have, I did have one comment on that. And one is during conversations with Bellhaven regarding the construction on the site, they had asked if possible if we could keep the open space as it is during construction so that the trucks and any other vehicles be parked there as opposed to on the roads, because the roads are supposed to have no cars parked in them. So we're proposing perhaps to have...
So they would further compress the soil?
Well, there's a driveway there.
But you want them to park through the rest of the open space?
Well, on the driveway.
Well, you're gonna have trucks going on it, you're gonna get further compression and damage, so you're gonna ever have to restore more. Katie, Pat? Thoughts?
About the open space?
How do you want to do it?
Well, as we... Ms. Clawberg, who...
Oh, I gotta turn mine off.
Who requested that the trucks park in the open space again?
The construction firm.
Bellhaven had suggested that perhaps that would be a better idea than having...
Bellhaven Land Company suggested it.
And do you have a letter that says that? It's not...
So the open space? It's a...
It's supposed to be bounded by rocks and then meadow grass. So it's not like it's a big deal to put meadow grass in, but I just thought if there's a driveway there that they can park the trucks on, it's a lot less messy than parking the trucks on either, on the lot. No, I think it's still as it was. It has to be done. And we can make it a condition to the issuance of the CO.
Park in the open space?
Bellhaven wants them to park in the open space.
So they say, but we don't have a letter, and the trees that were taken down were a risk to the residences. I mean, I just feel, I'm concerned that this applicant isn't creating a lot of credibility for us. Okay, so...
My only point is that once you file a map on the land records and you have a declaration of restrictions in place, the open space is at that point. You see what I'm saying? So it's now not, they haven't done what they were supposed to do with the meadow and whatnot. It's still in its existing condition.
Right.
We actually talked about actually restoring the open space prior to yesterday. I think it's actually kind of a difficult situation. It's like, yeah, park in the open space, but that whole object of the game of open space is to let it go. We're mediating a construction site to make it open space, which is kind of odd to me. I know it can get done, but it...
I mean, you're disturbing the...
Putting the horse before the cart, right? Or the cart before the horse.
Yeah, I mean, you're disturbing the entire property. Is there no room on the property for construction vehicles?
I suppose it can be made, I'm sure. I just thought it was a kind of a good idea, but apparently it's not.
No.
I mean, if we agree to park just on the driveway that's there, and then make the driveway when we're done, or I just...
Again, I think the commission needs to decide, are you going to enforce the declaration? It should be, this should be done already. There should be no driveway there at all.
Yeah.
You know, it should be open space meadow mix already. I mean, we're in the planting season. It should be the way, I mean, it should be protected already with the boulder wall, et cetera.
I'm curious if Bellhaven had, the Bellhaven Club you're talking about, right?
The association.
What's that?
The association, the homeowners' association.
You should know that. Did they have other comments on this? I know it's not part of our regulations, but did they look at this site plan in depth?
Yes, they've been reviewing it. They've been back and forth with the new homeowners.
And are they okay with everything?
They have a lot of conditions that have to be met, but...
And their vote is next week, on the seventh of May, as I understand it.
I don't know about that. You know, there are conditions that have to be met that are, you know...
Time. I'm the owner of Paul Tremontano. So, look, I do have a letter from Bellhaven that suggested this. I recognize, because of what Katie said, that it's not possible to park on that area.
Okay.
I thought that it would be cleaner to take the driveway out after the construction was done and just clean that, you know, grade that area and clean it up, which I'm happy to do. I'm also happy to do it now if you want me to do it. It's really not a big deal to take the driveway.
Actually, we, I don't know, but we had moved on to another question, and you may know the other question, which is, there's an agreement with, a settlement with Bellhaven, which we have a copy of, which is, doesn't seem to be signed and dated. It has December X on it, and it's not filled in. Then, and there's some conditions on that about the driveway and stuff, but in addition, we understand that Bellhaven has to, is reviewing this, and Mr. Yeski was just asking if it's been approved, if your plan's been approved by Bellhaven.
It has.
And I had understood that it was next week, their vote.
No, no. So the plan is approved, there, we've been back and forth on the landscaping plan, and I've met with the head of their architectural board a number of times, and I think we have an agreement in principle, he just has to go back and get it voted on.
So the board's gonna vote on it next week?
I think it's this week, actually.
The seventh?
You might be right.
I believe it is, yes.
So, look, my goal is to get a CO. I'm happy to simultaneously take out that driveway and plant meadow seed. I just thought it would be, you know, more elegantly done at the end of the job, but it's easy either way.
Here's the problem, if you use the open space as a construction zone, you compress the soil, so you're gonna have to decompress it. The other thing is that most people get it done before they start the open space, so this thing's kind of been...
We'll park on the property, there's plenty of room. No, no issue.
Okay.
No issue, I was trying to accommodate Bellhaven, but no issue.
Yeah. I think that's what, is that where you guys are coming out as well?
Yes. I think it actually goes, it goes to the issue of actually, it's, the subdivision's been tended to. Part of that agreement was actually that is, the driveways to come out and the open space established, so that's kind of all already in play. So if we do something different now, we're actually kind of going against what the subdivision was already filed, so we're kind of, kind of crossed on that. So we have to do one or the other, but I think...
Actually, the subdivision, this was all supposed to have been completed, I'm just learning from the previous owner, Mr. Anderson.
Yep.
And...
Which is why we don't sound, we sound kind of unhappy about it, 'cause...
And apologies.
'Cause it was our expectation that this was all gonna be done, so then hearing that it's gonna be used as a construction area, okay.
Totally understand.
So that was...
I spoke to Mr. Anderson today, and he's agreed to pay for it, and I'll do the work, and I'm happy to, you know, do that, starting as soon as I can.
Okay.
But I'd love for it not to be a condition to get a CO, because that'll further hold me back if that's at all possible.
Well, the CO would be at the end of your construction.
Not a CO, a building permit.
Well, when do you plan on doing that?
As soon as I can get somebody in there to do it, like, next week.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, your plans, once you're done with the planning and zoning commission, then there's a building permit, a zoning permit sign-off phase, which takes at least a couple of weeks, and then you have to apply the votes. So you're still six weeks out from getting a building permit, minimum.
Okay, so I'll have it done before.
So this agreement, this waiver of certain terms of settlement agreement that you have from Bellhaven, it's dated December 2018, but this copy we have is neither signed nor actually dated. Do you know when that's gonna get?
I'm sure it's signed and dated, and I could just, it's, again, it's Anderson signed it, so I can just get a signed copy from Tom Hegney.
Okay, so we're gonna ask you to provide that. Okay, now, what do you guys think about doing, when do you want to do the open space deadline? You want to do it before CO, before permit, before building or zoning?
Before she receives the zoning sign-off.
Zoning sign-off, not building permit, but zoning sign-off.
Well, that's what you're root for.
What do you want?
We lose control once it goes to building permit.
So let's do zoning? Okay. So we are gonna do it before zoning permit? Because it should have been done? Okay.
It's not like she won't do the rest of it, she will just wait to issue the letter till it's done.
And I think we should get, we should get Conservation to review it.
The open space?
Yeah. Once it's done.
Well, what are they... It's already been approved.
No, no, but somebody's gotta go make sure it's done. Who's gonna go?
Oh, after the fact, yeah.
Yeah. So why don't we ask Conservation that the three trees will be replaced?
Yeah, it's usually planning and zoning, and then we work with Conservation.
Great. Okay, so you guys will take a look at it and make sure, okay.
It ends up being Conservation, but the person is...
She's...
Okay, all right.
But we work with them.
Okay, anybody else got questions on this? Nick? So what we understand from what Ms. Clawberg has represented, represented the last time, but we wanted confirmed, is that initially that there was only to be one driveway cut, and we were uncomfortable with the fact that the driveway splits in two, because one of the reasons that they only wanted the one driveway cut was because of the, how much impervious surface you were adding. So it seemed you're adding more impervious surface than we originally expected as well. So, but Ms. Clawberg is telling us that Bellhaven is comfortable with that, that the neighbors are comfortable, and we were trying to accommodate neighbors. The association has no legal power here, but we do try to accommodate neighbor concerns.
Yeah, no, so the association's fine with the house, we're just final discussions around landscape.
All right.
You mentioned that you have a landscaping plan, or that you're working with one.
Yes.
I was just curious, the last time, the neighbors also had a little bit of a problem with the corner going around, they were worried that it'd be blocked, the sightlines would be blocked, is that all straightened out?
Any other questions, commissioners? Any other comments? No? Mr. McCray, may I have a motion? Well, that's a good question. The other thing was...
Does it have any, does it pertain to us?
No.
It pertains to zoning. It's a private matter.
It's a private matter, and the neighbors have not come either time, so...
Well, and I think, I think you should, I mean, you do run the risk that if for some reason they don't approve it, and you've got to revise the plans, and you have to come back to planning and zoning, so do you want to leave it?
If they don't approve...
If Bellhaven doesn't approve your plans?
No, the plans are already approved by Bellhaven.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but we've been given...
Just talking about landscaping.
Okay, we've been given to understand that Bellhaven is approving the plans next week.
Just the landscaping.
Okay.
Their approving my plan was a, was a condition of me buying the property, so the plan itself is approved.
So what was the sticking point with the landscaping?
It was just, you know, placement of trees, and they want to keep a park-like, you know, view.
Gotcha. So the number and all that, that's not really gonna change materially?
All right, and they could work with Conservation on that? If there's any changes? Okay. Is there any public comment on this application before we may go further? No? Okay, all right, now we can have a motion, Mr. McCray.
Application PLPZ 2019-00083, Final Coastal Site Plan, and final, course with site, Final Subdivision 2017-415, at two oh four Otter Rock Drive, and Lot Two. Motion to approve Final Coastal Site Plan with the following conditions. Applicant to provide the signed agreement with the Bellhaven Land Company, signed by, I guess it was the subdivision, previous subdivision applicant. A phasing plan showing remediation of the open space should be submitted prior to the zoning permit, indicating the remediation process and the demarcation boulders.
Sign-off. Zoning permit.
Zoning permit sign-off, yeah. A revised landscape plan for the open space should be submitted, that includes the meadow area and replacement of the trees, as per the Conservation Committee's recommendations. The architectural plan should be revised to omit the kitchen et in the basement. Conservation staff and, Conservation and Planning and Zoning Staff to inspect the restored open space when it's done. Commission requests that the final landscape plan for, as I said, the open space and the site be submitted to staff. This would be the one that's actually reviewed and approved by the Bellhaven Land Company.
Any other staff, outstanding staff? Any other outstanding?
Any other outstanding staff or departmental comments to be addressed? And I think that covers everything.
Can anybody think?
I just wanted a second.
Okay, Yeski seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next application is James Gould for a final subdivision at ninety-four Pexland The regular members are all seated on this.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the, members of the Commission, Larry Liebman from SC Minor. With me tonight is our Senior Drainage Engineer, Peter Finkbeiner, as well as Attorney Hegney. This is a two-lot subdivision of 5.86 acres of land into two two-acre lots in the RA2 Zone. The project has been reviewed by the Wetlands Agency, where they granted conceptual approval in January. The Health Department granted approval for the, for Lot B for, in February. The zoning enforcement officer has issued comments saying about the walls of the new driveway entrance for B will need to comply, which we can make that happen. DPW Engineering has issued comments and approves the application for a zoning permit. We found this photograph in the, we found this photograph in the house that is being, that is being remodeled on Lot A, and it says Grandpa Eustad's House. We don't have a date of it, but that's what it was. This was the old, one of the Eustad homesteads. So, and that's the size, roughly the size of the structure that they're taking the house, the existing house, and bringing it down to. They're getting rid of all of the extraneous additions and doing that. This is the subdivision plat. There is no activity proposed for Lot B. Lot B is a conceptual lot, they're, we're not proposing to build anything on it. There are, have been questions about whether or not we can remove a rain garden, yes, we can. We can meet the, we can meet the Conservation Department staying a five feet away or even further, as well as even moving the house down. We are, we know that the lot, when it goes, when the lot is going to be developed on Lot B, we are going to be back in front of this agency as well as the Wetlands Agency, where we're going to be doing that. There is no issues as far as that's concerned. There is a reduction of, there was a question about FAR, currently on Lot A, where it's the only one where there's, on Lot A, which is the only house that, the only part of the lot that has buildings on it. The current FAR, according to the tax charge, is 7,429 existing. The maximum FAR after the subdivision is, once, if, when the subdivision is granted, affords 10,459 square feet. There is going to be, as far as the house is concerned, there's over a thousand square feet are going to be removed, and there's another portion of the barn structures that are going to be removed to make it more consistent with what the current owner wants, and this building that's here, this building over here, the cottage, that's going to be removed as well. So it's well under, it's well under, is more than 3,000 square feet less than what the FAR, maximum FAR is proposed. The maximum FAR for Lot, for parcel B is 8989 square feet, but that's to be determined since the house that's on there is a Larry house. That's the one that, you know, it's just a stockhouse that we placed on it. The other questions that were asked of whether or not the house could be shifted further to the south, yes, it can. The what, the rain garden, that's easy, that's an easy shift, yes, that can be taken care of. The question of the other, the Conservation comments, we can go into that, and that'll be fine.
But basically, you're willing to comply with everything that Conservation is requesting?
Not everything that Conservation is requesting.
Okay, what are you not willing to do?
We're not gonna remove the drain from the, from the wetland area at this time. We're not proposing to remove the drain that's in...
The open space?
That's in the open space, and has been in the open space prior to 1990. It was, in 1992, an application was brought forth to the Wetlands Agency, where the Wetlands Agency granted permission for a, for a outlet control structure to be placed there. Then, in the, in 2000, it went back, and I've given all of this information, the Wetlands Agency said, "We prefer it to be as the status quo. Do nothing, leave it the way that it is." The way that it is, is it's tied into the catch, it's tied into the drain line out in the road, and that was done, that was done in 2000 by unanimous decision by the Wetlands Agency. The fact, the fact of saying that there shouldn't be surface water discharging into the town system, it happens all the time. Every day, all the time it happens.
No, the issue is, the issue is, as you know, that we don't like drainage structures in the open space.
And, and, and they, and to remove that drainage structure from the open space, it would mean that we would have to destroy...
It's more disturbing.
...the wetland to get the pipe out of it to go and then to do what? When the Wetlands Agency in 2000, Mr. Rilly brought it to the agency himself, and said, "Leave everything well enough alone, just leave it the way that it is, and don't mess with it," so this way then it is. Right now, if you would go out there, this open space area, which not only is the open space area that we get, but we also took the extra, the other wetland that's on that lot, and put it in conservation restriction that says nothing can happen to it, it looks like a great big rain garden, and that's exactly what it's working as.
Okay, excuse me just a second, Mr. Lieb. Pat, that's a similar situation to the one that we encountered in Dingle Town, that's where, on Dingle Town, that was where you brought it up yesterday, that that had also been a pre-existing drainage structure?
Yeah, and, and my recommendation would just be that we make sure that we have the proper protocols in there, so if it ever needs to be maintained, we can go in there and we don't have to do...
Because that was the concern.
Right. So typically, what happens in a situation like that is we get a drainage easement inside the open space area, and then there's permitted activities that can happen within that easement related to the drain.
Okay.
The Wetlands Agency has signed off on the subdivision.
Yes, they have.
And so they're aware, obviously, is this...
They were aware.
It's Conservation who's raising this.
Conservation raised that issue afterwards, and she was going to raise other issues, and she didn't realize, and then I sat down and went over with all of the, all of the, just the file on this in Wetlands from 1992, it's 750 pages, okay? And I read them all just to find out what it was, and then I went over with Mr. Clausy, and I went over it, and we did all of this prior to the conceptual approval.
So what did, what did Wetlands say about it in the recent round?
Wetlands, Wetlands said that Lot B has got to come back to them prior to any activity happening.
So it's theoretically or possibly they could deal with it at that time, right?
Right.
If that's the case, if that is something that is desired, if they'd like us to go and, if they make that a continued, a plan, it's in open space, and we would have to ask that, and we would have to come back here from the way I understand it. Once the open space is granted, the open space is granted, and it will, like Pat said, we would leave in the declaration, if it ever needs to be maintained, that it could be maintained.
So does the declaration include language, Mr. Hegney, that deals with this pipe situation?
It does. I provided that to Pat this evening, it hadn't been done earlier, but I did draft the Declaration of Restrictions to deal with this pipe and its maintenance.
Okay. What's, what's the, was it said? I mean, in other words, if, if, let's say, when you take that parcel to Wetlands Agency, they want for the, for the development, and they want the pipe removed, what would, what in your mind would happen at that stage with the open space? You'd have to come back to the Commission?
No, because the Declaration of Restrictions provides for its maintenance replacement or, or repair. And I think that would include taking it out.
Removal would be repair, right?
I can add the word removal, but frankly, as Larry said, this is just one huge rain garden. You drive by and say, "Wow, what a meadow," and it works very well, and it's a small pipe that comes out of the center of it.
I mean, my only concern is, though, that if it did have to come out, and the amount of disturbance it would be needed.
There would be extensive disturbance, it's, you know, it's a couple hundred feet long at least.
How big is the pipe? What's the diameter?
It's an eight-inch pipe.
How long is it?
It's, it's over, I would say, over 200 feet.
How deep is it?
That's, that's, that's the big question, because from the elevations that we have, it's approximately four, from when they designed the different thing in 1992, it's about four feet deep.
You have to make a finding.
Where is the start of the pipe? Because you could stop the input side of the pipe and just remove the output structure. You don't have...
You can plug the pipe?
Yeah, you don't need to pull the pipe out of the ground if you block it outside the open space.
That would be a smaller disturbance, but again, that whole idea of doing that is, is it would then change the hydrology of the area, that it's been that way since 1992. If that's what's requested, that could be done.
I think that what we're saying is that we want to make sure that we're covered in case Wetlands rethinks their prior approval, and I would just say, or repair slash remove, so we're not having a legal battle if it's covered in the declaration.
Do you want, do you want the development of Lot B to come back to us when it happens?
Without a bad to it. Without a doubt.
It comes back through the staff anyway.
No, through staff. Do you want it to come back to the commission?
The Wetland Agency will receive an application and will have public hearings.
No, I meant to the commission, the same way, with the same thing we did with Otter Rock. If we had a concern about how this was being developed. Let me ask you a couple more questions. There was also a concern about, when you change the house on Lot A, what's going to happen to the nonconformity on the front, the setback nonconformity?
It remains.
It's going to stay. So that nonconformity-
It predated zoning.
Yeah, so that nonconformity will continue when they remodel the house on Lot A, and it'll be unchanged.
Correct.
Okay, the second thing that was raised in the briefing, in the staff reports, is some of those historic structures, whether the applicant would consider keeping them. The stone walls-
We're not applying for a historic overlay on this property.
I know you're not, just because it's a nice thing to do.
If the owner, this particular owner is looking to restore it and have the old farm feel to it, and probably will want to keep those stone walls.
And the shed.
If I may add, if I may add, from the original submission that I made to you, this revised submission, this lot line, this lot line was shifted this way and more property was given so that the remains that are right here are in the setback. So theoretically, there isn't anything that's supposed to happen there because we placed them where they are. The lot line is there and the applicant is requesting, he says, "I'd like them to be on my property, not on a piece of property that may not be mine in the future." So we've done that. So we're not, we have no intention of taking out any of those ruins, is what he said.
You mentioned that you would be removing them in the beginning. You said you-
No, no, those are the structures themselves. That's this area up here.
Right, okay, got it.
There's an area there, and then there's a structure here.
But the shed you're going to keep and the stone walls?
Those stone walls and the old farm remains, they're to be preserved, they're to be left alone.
But, but I wouldn't want that as a condition of the subdivision approval. That's, we're not coming in asking for an historic overlay on this property.
Maybe we want to list what things that, what-
We can say that the commission notes that the house, that there are historic structures on the property, that the applicant has said there's an interest in retaining.
That's fine.
It would be great, actually, if, before you filed the MYLAR, if you could get those photographed at least, just so it's documented.
Sure, we can provide that.
Because, I mean, if you do want to take them down a year, years later, it's possible that-
Because you really hate when the commission's working on the POCD, because one of the feedback, a key piece of feedback we're getting is that people are very attached to those old structures and stone walls and, you know-
As is our client, but that doesn't mean that will necessarily be the case.
Yeah, no, we can't make you do it. We understand that.
But I'd also like to have any other historical information about those structures. If you know the date of the house, if you know any particular, if you have any particular information on that, it would be nice to know.
We can speak with the Historical Society and see what they have in their archives.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments?
Just, excuse me, returning, they're going to go back to Wetlands for this, no matter what. I think that's actually probably the best public forum for it, because they're going to have to actually have a real house with a real drainage system and address their concerns where that pipe winds up.
But we should still have a copy of the-
Okay, I think we'll come back to staff, no matter what, for their sign-off. But I think the biggest concern would be, from probably our point of view, is actually within any neighbor concern, but I think that definitely will be addressed at Wetlands at that time. Because I think actually, at that time, it's going to, like I said, it's going to be an honest-to-God house with an honest-to-God drainage system, ready for permit, going through that process. So back to staff, not us.
Yep, that's where we had kind of come out before. Nobody else?
Madam Chair, I do have one other comment.
Yes.
Chip Haslin represents Mrs. Hubbard, who lives on the other side of Meadow. And I spoke with him this afternoon. He was not planning on being here, but he asked me to represent that as part of the process, we would notify Mrs. Hubbard at the time we file an application and provide plans to her so that she would have an opportunity to review those as part of that submission. And I represented to Mr. Haslin that I would put that on the record and ask that that be made a part of the decision.
Great.
Thank you.
Surprised me. We talked-
Any comments from the public? All right.
Mr. Higgin, real quick, just quick, so I can get the proper information. Mrs. Hubbard's property is to which direction?
To the west, on the opposite side of Meadow. Southwest.
What's the address?
It's 100 Pexland.
100 Pexland.
The house fronts on Pexland.
All right, so no other comments then? We'll close this item. Mr. McRae, may I have a res-
For application, PLPZ 2019-00019, final subdivision, subdivided existing 5.86 acre parcel at 94 Pexland, wrote it to two parcels. Motion to find that this is a subdivision. I motion to approve the subdivision with the following conditions. The applicant has stated that movement of the rain garden out of the open space can be done, and that the walls at the front of the property can comply to zoning. The house can be relocated.
I think, I think we say that the house will be, on development of Lot B, that the house will be relocated.
What she said. The applicant has indicated that Lot A will conform to the FAR.
While retaining the existing non-
Lot B, that is, that's Lot B.
Lot A.
Lot B conforms to FAR. The subdivision will continue the nonconformity of Lot-
A.
A, as it predates zoning.
The front yard, front yard setback, yes.
Historic structures on the site, the applicant is to provide a basic historic background and photos prior to the filing of the map. The neighbor to the southwest at 100 Pexland will be notified prior to any continued application to Wetlands or P&amp;Z.
And that the applicant has stated their intent to maintain the existing historic structures?
I did say, I said that.
Yep, as well as document them. You said that.
I said that.
Yeah, okay.
Did you say the declaration will be reviewed by the law department?
No.
No.
That the declaration for the, for the open space will be reviewed by the law department and shall be amended to reflect possible future removal of the drainage line. And that's fine, you guys agreed to that.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next application is Balducci's Market, applicant for Cross Sawmill LLC owner, for a final site plan to request a change of use for a portion of the supermarket to be designated as retail food service. Said retail food service shall have, will have associated with a 12 outside seats for dining.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. John Higgin for the applicant. I was really hoping to catch a spot in that seventh round. John Higgin for the applicant, not catching. As discussed on the call, we are designating 1,273 square feet of the existing first floor at Balducci's Market as retail food service to comply with the regulations for outdoor dining. We are maintaining over 4,000 square feet of the same space to ensure that we maintain our supermarket status at the site as well. We have 6,129 square feet dedicated to the food service. When we were back here in 2013, we added the 17,000, or the 1,700 square feet that is the separate but affiliated liquor store on the north side of the property. I would love to take credit for this idea, but I do have to credit staff. I did have a different idea of what should happen here, and let's just say this is a much more elegant solution. It is, it is simpler. Thank you.
Probably still going to make the change to the regulations, though, so that, so that it could happen that a supermarket has outdoor dining, but you don't have to endure the process. We'll just do it ourselves.
Madam Chair, I do think it's a good idea. I think that there are supermarkets that will be interested when you do do that.
Yep, we do too. Especially because there's so much good weather lately.
Maybe not today, but certainly the last few days.
Where's he been?
Last week he was a monsoon.
Not that week either, but if you go far enough back, you're going to find some good days back there.
There will be good days.
There will be good days.
There will be good days.
There's sand coming and snow is on.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions on this application?
No.
No questions?
My only question, you're not going to put in the indoor dining?
No, that's not proposed. We did have a conversation with the Health Department. There will be no change to the food preparation, no change to food service. All of that will remain the same.
You need to make it clear in the resolution that there's no indoor dining.
And we have the use plan to show that as well.
And you got the Health Department's sign-off and the compliance with the grease trap, so we don't have to raise any of that.
We did.
Okay. All right. Do I have any public comment for this application? No. Okay, so then we're going to close this, and Mr. McRae, might I have a motion?
Application, PLPZ 2019-0039, for a final site plan, request change of use for a portion of the supermarket designated as retail food establishment to foster, request for seasonal outdoor dining use of 12 seats at three tables at 1050 East Potomac Avenue in the LPR2 zone. Motion to approve said application, understanding that there will be no indoor dining. The Health Department has signed off on the plan dated 4/26/19 by Ridberg &amp; Associates. All grease traps and requirements of the Sewer Department to be resolved, including inspections of said, zoning department has said okay. The seasonal timing for the seats will be April 1st to November 1st, I think it is. And they will be located right at the front door. The seasonal seating and tables will be restored off-site in the off-season.
My question, if they're allowed 12 retail food seats inside, they're not having, why can't they have them outside?
They're not allowed inside.
Yeah, they are. You are.
Well, they're not, they're, they'd have to remove the outside ones.
I'm saying, right now, they have no indoor.
Right, they have none.
Yes.
And so why can't there 12 be outdoors year-round, just?
You know, it's funny, I asked the same thing yesterday, and the answer I was given, well, because of the outdoor dining, it's a program. And so effectively, we have a program that goes from April 1st to November 1st.
I thought that was street. I mean, I don't want to mucky up the waters, but I just think it's-
I asked the same question yesterday. Katie, I'll for you.
I think that if you go through the outdoor dining permit applications, it contemplates-
But that was because it was on the avenue.
Exactly, and those are, those are what they're geared towards.
Well, there is-
And you want to come in under a different section of the regulations, like Gerlick Arms is an example. They have a bench, fine, that could be there year-round, but that's not outdoor dining. So if you're coming in under the outdoor dining protocols, then you have to follow them. And the protocol is, it's April 1st to November 1st, because that's the way that it's most manageable for staff. And that's, and the purpose of this is for people to sit outside. If you want to have a bench where people can sit outside and hang out or something in front of the grocery store, that's a different, that's not what they're proposing.
Okay.
Okay. All right, continue on.
I think I actually got all of it.
I think that we could add, I hope this is actually correct, because the staff was confused about this, but that, two things we should add, that the applicant has 55 total parking spaces, 51 regular and four handicap, that anticipates no increase in the parking demand, and that we should also include in the decision letter all the square footage numbers, the liquor store, the supermarket, and the retail. Just put it into the letter, and just so that it's there for the future.
That's actually a reference of the approved Health Department plan in red.
Yeah, but our, but our decision letter should also say-
Staff can use that as a reference.
Yeah.
And that plan was actually by Ridberg &amp; Associates, dated April 15, 2019.
And that is-
That's it.
All she wrote. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Aye, and so begins the public meeting. Our first item of the public hearing is the Hartford Roman Catholic Diocese Incorporated for a Final Site Plan and Special Permit. On this application are seated all the regular members.
Good evening, everyone.
No, they still haven't done all the work that they need to do.
Hi. Good evening, Chris from Bristol, representing the applicant. This is a church project on, up in Banksville. The project really is to improve ADA access by restoring or redoing the porch and some associated grading in order to make the site, like I said, better and more friendly to ADA users.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Bristol. Fellow commissioners, just so you know, this is, this application has had its maximum extension, and it is a must-close tonight. So any, anything that's open needs to be resolved this evening. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. And so, so we had the plan proposed, some, a couple neighbors expressed concern about how the drainage was set up, was proposed at the time, even though we're actually reducing coverage and I don't have to submit a formal, we didn't have to submit a formal drainage summary plan. We worked with the neighbors in order to revise the site plan in order to attenuate their, and address their drainage concerns. The plan is this, is, there's not much changes, actually. There's a curbing installed around here, around these areas, and around over here. There's curbing proposed around this area here, around the driveway circle. There are catch basins here and over on this side here to collect the water and run it over there, and then pipe it from, from this side down slope to a riprap discharge over toward the back. So that proposal has been reviewed by DPW, actually, earlier today. The DPW issued comments where they said it was okay for zoning permits for us to go forward, so we have that addressed. One of the comments in the P&amp;Z staff report was that the ARC comments weren't addressed. I emailed over, I'm not sure if you guys got it. Our submission in March actually had, those plans were addressed, those plans addressed the ARC comments. And, yes.
Those, the plans addressed the comments, but did the ARC review the plans that were submitted for the comments?
Because staff report to us says that they have not gone back to ARC.
The comments said to submit electronically, actually. So actually, I took that to mean that we had everything in order, subject to a few final details. And if you look at the-
That's actually not what staff is telling us, Mr. Bristol.
Okay. So-
So the comment from staff is that the ARC requirements were fairly straightforward, but final architectural plans have not yet been submitted for endorsement by ARC. The commission, the commission encouraged the applicant to submit such plans during the last hearing. The applicant wishes to address final revisions prior to zoning permit sign-off. So apparently-
The submission in March was, addressed those comments.
Okay, well, that's, this staff report is dated April 27th, and she's saying that ARC has not received-
What should I have done between March- What should I have done between March and now? I submitted them in March, the plan dates on March 22.
She says the final architectural plans have not yet been submitted, and you said...
But that's incorrect, though, because I'm telling you that...
Can you just talk to the microphone?
I'm sorry, that's incorrect, because what I submitted today, and I can hand it in now, is part of my March 22 correspondence, where I submitted new plans, and where we noted how we addressed those specific comments. And if you look at the comments, the comments are very, very small.
So you're saying that the ARC didn't receive the comments for some reason?
Listen, I can't route anything internally. I guess that's the case.
We don't route to ARC. We go to...
Can you turn your mic off?
We don't route to ARC.
It was a submit electronically, right? I think that's what it was...
Okay.
That's how I read it, and I could look for the minutes, but that's how I saw it. And anytime I've seen submit electronically, it was a more informal process to confirm that you've done all the little things that you said you're going to do before you go for your zoning.
And, Mr. Bristol, can you just walk us through the little things?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going by the architect's letter of March 22. Color of both crosses will be consistent, gray is recommended by ARC. Refer to sheet 8200, we have added a note to the exterior elevations to confirm both crosses will be the same color. Applicant will revise the shape of the portico slightly. Then this is going from the architect's letter, group decided... I can read his response. "My recollection is that there was some back and forth on this issue, and that by the end, the group had decided that there really is not a productive way to adjust the location of the portico without initiating a cascade of additional consequences or compromise to alignment with existing eaves, the porch ceiling, and other existing building elements. We did indeed study this pretty extensively, but believe that the portico as submitted remains the best solution, given the constraints." Again, it's a portico to a country church out in Banksville. Flagpole relocation is recommended for approval as submitted. Please refer to the landscape drawings prepared by Rosalia Sani, on which the flagpole location is demarcated." And those are, that's what the correspondence was from the architect addressing the comments. And again, we're not rebuilding the church.
So, you don't have to, that's, we don't need to hear that comment. So, what your architect responded is that you studied this extensively, but think that what you're doing is the best. So you actually didn't do what ARC wanted, so probably they're saying they still don't have the final resolution. So what we would suggest is that prior to zoning permit, you get square with ARC, and you talk to Marisa. Okay? Because you actually have not done what they asked.
That was, the intent was to look at these things. And again, there was a lot of discussion, you know, and respectfully, we're trying to keep everything relatively...
Did you copy Marisa on this letter?
Yes, and I meant...
Sent to her.
Yeah.
Sent to her.
So, it's her responsibility to give...
No, no, she's the one who says in the staff report that the issues haven't been resolved, and she says that last week. So, in her mind, this letter, where they say, yeah, we looked at this and we're not going to do it, left something open. So I think that we just say, make sure that it's all squared away prior to zoning permit, we're in good shape.
I'm happy to do...
Because they're minor things.
Very minor.
Very minor things, and just square it away.
I'm more than happy to do that, certainly. Yes.
Just to Marisa. Okay, now, you've got one other issue, you've got some comments from conservation since the last time?
Conservation, I'm sorry, I spoke with, I spoke with landscape architect. If you look at the hemlocks that we're removing, or up here where we have the retaining walls and the drainage structures, we can't keep, we can't, and we're actually keeping some, we're just removing a few of them there.
It says you're removing three hemlocks, you can't leave, and that you're replacing them with toujas. Why can't you just leave the hemlocks and...
Because we can't, we can't do the work there. There's retaining wall, there's a retaining wall and the drainage pipe with the discharge coming right there.
All right, so here's a better deal for you. Why don't you put in something native along with a touja? And you replace something large and native, so that you're not getting, her point is that touja's non-native, okay?
They will be substantial, they are transplants from over there, but fine, we'll put something native over there.
Can you put that, can you put, instead of toujas, can you put hemlocks in?
More hemlocks? What's, you tell me, what's the difference?
Why don't we just say that you'll agree that with the conservation department, but that we strongly suggest that when you remove the hemlocks, since you're saying, you put something native, that's what they're looking for.
I understand. If you want to make that condition, that's fine. My only point was, is that we're actually trying to save a little bit of money by taking the, our, from the St. Michael's site and bringing them over. That's it.
Okay.
Deer-like arbor vine.
I'm not sure what else we had.
Deer-like arbor vine.
Oh, I didn't know that, because I don't have deer. Yeah, it's, I have a lot of it, and it's, okay, conservation. Okay.
So what do you want to do with the hemlocks?
He's going to, he's going to review, he's going to review, make every effort to utilize native species, to replace any plantings that have to be removed, any plantings that must be removed to accommodate the construction.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Public.
Any comments from the commission? Any other comments? Commission? No? Comments from the public? No. Okay.
Yep. Just spoke.
Sorry.
Robert.
You're the neighbor.
Yes.
And they've redone the drainage to accommodate you.
They've done a good job. The only thing I'd like you to, at that curbing, is going to be that pump on our entrances.
Okay, you're, because we're in the public hearing, so you...
You want to make sure that you're aware that they agreed with the pump.
Did he identify himself? Hold on, stop just a second, let's start over again. Say your name.
Robert Thompson.
Yep, take it from, take it from the top.
Robert Thompson, I'm the neighbor down at the back of the church. The other thing that I just want you to make in the notes there, they agreed to the pump on the curbing where you come in off the driveway, so that that water doesn't run down there and flood it out.
Okay.
That's what he started with.
That's the only thing you want to...
Okay, all right.
And that was a requirement with DPW, so...
Correct, and the plan does show that as well, so everything is good in that regard. Thank you.
Yeah, I like drainage, too. Okay. Okay, so, it's the only member of the public, so we will close this. Our next application is Miller Partners LLC for...
Can I make a comment on Saturday, even though it's been postponed, I represent the next church?
You know what, even though it's been postponed, the problem is that when it comes to us, the neighbors are going to be here, the applicant's going to be here, so it's better if we wait till then, because otherwise, we're getting information that isn't open to everybody else.
That he can email us.
But you could send an email to Katie, and she'll share it with us. Would that be okay?
We can have to notify if the changes...
Okay, sir, that's actually better to... You can come tell, you can come talk to Katie.
Yep. Those kind of issues can get handled through staff.
All right, Mr. Tessie, then. So Miller Partners LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone and create a P-zone at 9 and 19 Livingston Place. You're on, Mr. Tessie.
Thank you. Chairman John Tessie, as you indicated, representing the applicant, Miller Partners LLC, in connection with the, yes?
Speak up, okay, good.
Okay, in connection with the subject application to provide a change of zone from R6 to the P-zone on the property, which, you don't have up there. Okay, on the property at 9 and 13 Livingston Place. The property, as a combined property, is adjacent to 342 West Putnam Avenue, and then going across West Putnam, other GB-zoned parcels. The purpose of this application, which is consistent with the P-zone parameters, is to provide supplemental parking for primarily the, basically the operation of the, what is the Ferrari and Maserati dealership at 342 West Putnam Avenue. I know you're all familiar with that building, I assume you're all familiar with that building.
Supplemental parking for who? In the operation?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
For, well, the building at 342 West Putnam Avenue is a full-service dealership. We have at 342 a service base, showrooms, and showrooms. Showrooms are up and down, and basically the front. The building total is about 30,000 square feet. It's substantially inconsistent, it's legally non-conforming when it comes to the parking requirements of the town. There's some parking in front, as you know, again, as you know, because you've all seen it. It's been a car dealership, it was built as a car dealership in 1930. I forget the name of the original kind of car it was, but it doesn't exist today, I was there. It's had about five dealerships before that. So, again, it goes back from 1930s, basically, through today, so we're talking about 80 years, almost 90 years.
So who's parking in the P-zone?
Who's parking in the P-zone would be employees, would be, would be vehicles there for service. And there, I mean, it isn't that big a parcel. And also, there could be some inventory put in there.
And then where do those, where does, are all of those functions handled today?
Happened today?
And why, why is the need, what is the need for this now, at this juncture?
Those properties were all purchased over the last, well, 20 years, actually, the first one was purchased from the Bohax, which was here, and then the property back here, I think about, time goes by too quickly, four or five years ago, with the idea that someday they would be utilized as a P-zone. P-zone's been around a long time. So, at this particular point in time, essentially, the, all the car dealerships, manufacturers put pressure on car dealers to do certain things. Miller, over the last few years, has spent a heck of a money, a lot of money redoing the interior to specifications required by Ferrari, and also having to take further inventory. So, what's happened is that you just get to the point where there's a dearth of off-site locations. Miller does have a facility up in Stamford. As you know, Miller also has the operations across the street at 273 through 321 West Putnam Avenue, but it's just gotten to the point where they literally need more parking. What this, what this parking area does for Miller Motor Cars is, if not legally, but functionally, make the building less non-conforming. There's no intention to add bays, there's no intention to make any interior changes, there are no use changes or operational changes. The overall benefit is by having the parking here and available, you have less going in and out of the site, less, which I think from a safety standpoint is really important. West Putnam Avenue, as we all know, is very busy. They do have to move these cars, as all the car dealers do, whether you're BMW, whether you're Mercedes, they're always moving their cars around.
And so there's one service bay, but it's not really used, it's just there for compliance with the dealership?
One? No, they have eight dealers.
Eight, eight service bays? And are they used by Ferrari?
Yes.
I thought they moved, I thought they serviced them in Stamford.
Service them in Stamford, and Stamford also services the other Miller dealerships.
But this is just, like, cleanup-for-sale kind of service, right?
There's some regular service.
Oh, there's regular service?
There's some regular service going on, yeah.
I thought, okay, I thought there was just one that was for regular service.
There could be just one, but they do a lot of detailing in there. They do wash cars.
Right.
But if the total base, that I'm told by Mr. Koppelman when I asked him today, in terms of actual doing stuff on cars, may not be full service, they have up to eight.
And then the property next door, that's kind of like the throughway from the back here to Edgewood, I guess it is, what's that? Who owns that? And how is that used?
Over here, that's owned by...
And does that right-of-way continue on to that property?
Well, this right-of-way is all controlled by Miller Motor Car. They own all, by the Miller, what we call Miller Partners, which basically owns Miller Motor Cars.
But does that right-of-way continue on to the next property?
No, this is, this is part of the application property here.
Right.
This is the property you were referring to up here, owned by Miller, Miller Partners. The right-of-way originally was put in, it's owned by this parcel here, to, for the benefit of this building.
How?
This is where Miller, Miller Motor Cars building is right on the property line. There's a, there's a garage door here, that's where you access, access the service, the lower-level service area.
Right.
There's a top service area and a lower service area. The lower service area is accessed through a garage door here.
And so when you go out there and you see the cars parked, they're actually parking on that right-of-way, then?
Yeah, now they, they basically are, because Miller owns all of the, owns all the properties. So the right-of-way is, it's an old deeded right-of-way, but no third party utilizes the right-of-way, or has connection to it. It's just shown on the D, it's shown on the survey, because it's required.
But how, but what was the original intent of the right-of-way? I'm still not following that.
Original intent was, was, I mean, I don't know what's in the heads of people, I can tell you what, what it functionally works. It works for Miller Motor Cars, it was part of this property here, and actually, this property here, too, had the right, the deeded right. So, it worked for all the properties here. I didn't, what was I going to say? You know, I didn't, I didn't go back and study every little element of it, but from the deeds themselves, these are the properties, the only properties have a right to use it. I didn't see if this property at one time was part of this property. This was an old subdivision at one point, but it's been all changed, going back to the 20s.
So as part of the proposal, then, if the lots are consolidated, that easement will be discontinued?
Well, we can discontinue it, but the point is that we wouldn't necessarily, we have this in a separate ownership, this property.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not merging the properties.
Mm-hmm.
So from a legal standpoint, this property would always need this easement, because it's not being merged, but it has to these two properties. It is, so I can't really undo the full easement, because that's a separate parcel, legally.
The, the property adjacent to the dealership where the former gun store was, is gone.
Right.
That's not part of this application, but is there any, what's the dispensation of that particular property?
Well, I think the Miller Partners, that's based, that's owned by Miller Partners. So it's a disposition, as you see, it's being used...
As parking?
As parking, yeah.
Okay. That's one of the things that I had come up with the commission yesterday, it's actually, why is this needed? And actually, is there a master plan? Because I'm looking at a P-zone here, I'm looking at gravel parking on the side, I'm looking at parking in the front, and I'm saying, there's got to be something else here.
Well, actually, there isn't. The only master plan part of it is, so, okay, let me say this, the master plan is really to eventually knock down this building, too. They just, they'll wait on that a little bit. That's why I put it in a P-zone, so the master plan, if you will, would be to come back someday and have this all parking here.
Okay, so, what I'm looking at is actually, a little incremental step of a larger, more intensive P-zone.
But let me, let me say this, there is no plan to build a building here, which is probably...
Well, I'm not worried about that. I'm more like, what I'm worried about is this P-zone getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and it seems already that you have actually, I've got 15 spaces here.
Yeah.
Someday, we're going to tear the building down, get more spaces, and we're going to actually now paving out to the street in that vacant space that's gravel now, for, you know, where the gun...
Well, that's in the GB zone, that's not in the residential zone.
Yeah.
That's in the GB zone. So anything that happens on that site, you've got full, you know, control.
Mm-hmm. But I think what I'm looking for now is, what is the, what is the whole thing? I've got this, you're going to tear down a building and put more in here, and then what's the rest of the site, what's going to happen there? Is there a master plan for this site?
No, there's no master, there's no, there's no master, I mean, Tony's here, too. There's no quote, "master plan." The, as I said, right now, there's not an intention to knock it down. We could have certainly come in with a full proposal...
Yes, please.
...site plan for this site, to knock this building down. But we don't have a, we don't have an intent, well, we, when I say we, I mean, Miller Motor Cars doesn't have an intention to do that right now.
But here's the question, I mean, or... Sorry. Here, you're asking for a P-zone, why wouldn't you submit a parking plan for a P-zone, so we understand how it functionally works? Why would we convert this to a P-zone when it's got buildings? So we understand how it functionally works. Why would we convert this to a P-zone when it's got buildings on it and it can't function as a P-zone?
Well, well, no, well, no, that's not true. The, the P-zone does allow for any use in the R-six zone, as well as, as well as per parking. And I can tell you why, why honestly, we even included this. It's this, under your regulations, we have to be adjoint, the, 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 uh, P-zone parcel has to be adjacent to a, a commercial zone. Right-of-way is owned by this parcel. So these parcels could actually theoretically be named separate parcels, but they're both in a P-zone. So the reason, the method to that madness is that, um, we needed to make this a P-zone in order for this area to qualify.
Understand, we understand that. We understand that, but I think it's
If you want me to say, let me just say this in all honesty, because I don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathroom. If you, if you want us to, which, you know, I'll have to deal, but I don't know how to say it, if you want it. Or if you're gonna be feel more comfortable seeing a plan that shows this as a, uh, as a P-zone parking area too.
Yes, I think, I think
The question I would have of you is, because you can call it a master plan, there's no intention. It's almost kind of intuitive, but you say, and we want you to knock that building down. Or do we, or we, right now, or as part of the overall plan?
Okay, so what you're, what you're telling me is that you want the two parcels to become a P-zone?
Yes.
I'm saying, I understand that. What I'm saying is I would like to see the plan of the whole lot, the whole lot as consolidated
A P-zone.
As a P-zone.
I mean, when I say as a P-zone, you mean as a parking lot.
As a parking lot, yes, okay. Now, understanding that, let's move on just real quickly here. Um, I don't have a landscape plan.
Yep, there was a little bit of miscommunication among
Okay.
We fired, yeah, we fired Matt Pop.
Oops.
Fired or fired?
It sounded like fired.
Well, turns out, he thought we did fire him. That's what happened.
Oh, so you didn't fire him?
We didn't
Forgot the oops. Okay, so he's on board to develop a landscape plan.
Communication. I'll take the blame for that.
Mr. Pop has, Mr. Pop has actually experienced
Hold on a second.
He does, I saw that he actually did
Mr. Tessie, hold on a second here.
Okay.
On, if we're gonna talk about the landscaping plan, we better open the site plan at the same time? So
Well, the P-zone still has a landscaping plan.
So, but do you wanna, do you wanna open
Well, there is a requirement for the five-foot, for the strip, anyway. I'd like to talk about them both at the same
Can we open both? Because actually, the comments back and forth would be both, would be beneficial.
Yes, we, we can. Is that okay? Like, in other words, what we're doing
What we'll be doing is, from here on out, there, there'll be the transcript, which will apply to two files. And then from this moment back, we'll just be applying, so there'll be kind of two transcripts for the first file. Is that okay? Okay.
All right, so we're gonna open the next application at the same time then, which is the site plan for this property.
Okay, so getting back to you, Mr. Pop is on board for the landscape plan. He did the guy, he did the one down the street that we saw in the last
Yeah, I have a copy of it.
Okay.
With
Landscape, lighting, A R C.
Okay.
Um, I guess we're okay with engineering, but engineering would like to have the sidewalk on Livingston go all the way to West Putnam Avenue.
Well, that's, that's tricky.
What's what the regulation says?
No, because that property is not part of this application. But it's also tricky because the building goes right to the property line. So I'm not sure how to, Tony, Tony DeAngelo's here, here with me, could speak to that.
Okay.
So he was looking for the granite curbing going up there, but that property's technically not part of the application. I'm not sure it serves any purpose. Um, so that was a recommendation.
So, um, one question though, um, Petey, um, on the, on the uses that are permitted and the question that everybody was raising about what happens if it expands. So what's permitted in the P-zone?
Yes.
Is accessory uses
Yep.
That are, would be permitted in the adjoining zone. So what are the accessory uses that you would be contemplating? You said that you could have any use, but
No, I, I, come on, but I
But I'm reading that it says, the most, or so you're saying up here
No, I was saying, use, so any permitted use
Okay.
Most restrictive adjoining residential zone as permitted therein. That's what I was
All right, so what are you thinking you would do in this P-zone that would work with the residential zone as an access, as a, as a permitted use?
No, I was just talking about the rationale for leaving the building. Can you talk me to the microphone? Oh, sorry, I thought it was.
Again
No, no, I was talking about the rationale of leaving that building in the rear on that parcel.
I'm asking the question again. So what would be the uses that you would contemplate that are permitted in the R, in the, it's R-six, right?
Yes.
In the R-six zone that you would
Residential, residential use.
So you would continue the residential use here?
Yeah, but I'm gonna go back to the client also, because obviously, you're gonna continue this.
Yeah.
And talk to him about just coming in with a plan to take, to raise the building. Which I think it, maybe, so you can see the picture. You wanna see
The big picture, yeah.
Well, I, I As I said, I, I talked to Richard about, Richard, I'm sorry, Mr. Koppelman
Yeah.
Today, saying, I think you were gonna be more comfortable there seeing it, although he says, well, I don't really have intention right now to knock it down. And I said, I know, you sound like a client, but this is what I think the commission's gonna wanna see.
But it also would be helpful to have the overall site plan
Yeah.
Showing how it interfaces with the front building.
Perfect.
Because it's, I'm trying to put it together and look
Yeah, really, I, yeah.
It's really difficult to have a meaningful discussion without seeing the pieces
Yeah, the only inter, I understand, the only real interfacing with the, with the, with the building is through the garage. But we'll show you a consolidated plan.
But I just remember when we did Lamborghini and
They needed the parking.
Well, you did it, which I thought was quite clever.
That was Richard.
Sorry, we're not that clever.
We're not that clever. It was Richard who did Lamborghini.
I was gonna give Higginson credit, but I'll give Richard a credit. But you bought into it, which was to backdoor, backdoor the P-zone for otherwise unpermitted use.
That was Richard.
Okay, well, I guess Richard likes Lamborghinis.
My comment was saying how people communicate between the parking and the building and the safety
And they have to be able, it has to have pedestrian access, because that's what the regulation requires. But, uh, I, I think that, to what Mr. Fox is saying, so you say, well, we need this, we have this parking need.
Well, the building has a parking, well, the parking
How come now, how come you've managed all these years? Are you gonna keep inventory there? How is this gonna fit with the existing facility, which is what Mr. Fox is
Which is what I was, which I, which I already answered, but Can answer it again.
I'm a visual learner.
No, I'm saying is that
I like to see how it
You know, Lamborghini's a good example. Um, Lamborghini to exist and have, and to create that building and have it function as a dealership, needed creativity on your all part to allow them to do it by, by expanding into the P-zone.
But that's the thing, is that
Here, we, we're, we're trying to make a nonconforming use, nonconforming parking situation better, um, because we're legally there now. Um, the interface works out quite smartly with the, uh, uh, with, with the lower-level work, because the, because the garage door is right there. So you actually take street, park, street access away
The question, right, so
For a good part.
But you, you know that you're not answering, I mean, the key question that Mr. Fox asked, why now? And how is this gonna dovetail? So it's gonna fit nicely, but why never before? What is the need that has arisen? What are you gonna use it for? How many car, how, what's the movement gonna be? Employees gonna be there? You're gonna store inventory there? You're gonna store transition? What are you gonna do?
I've answered all of those questions, but I'll answer them again and I'll put it in writing.
Okay, also
I don't, you know, keep going over the same thing.
The other thing is, your original site plan
Hmm?
For this, we were wondering, the cars that go in the front yard of the main building?
Yeah.
How
Been there for ninety years. So
What did the nineteen thirty site plan look like?
I have a picture. I have a picture of the building while they were constructing it. And you'll see car, and you'll see cars in the front. You gotta understand.
I think the question that come up in the briefing
So I don't know what you mean. You have the building for ninety years and you have cars in front to split both
Okay, then that was the question that came up yesterday.
Customer parking, that's the only place they could be.
Is, is it, the front space, their front spaces, that's for parking of
That's customer parking.
Customer parking.
And, and, and it's
Well, it's not
I'm asking, that's a question, I wanna, I wanna really kind of define what that is.
There's limited display, but there are a few
Limited display, but there's customer parking in the front. That's primary, it's primary use.
Well, you know, it's not like it's a hand-eye dealer. You don't get a ton, you know, but, but it's customer parking, which you do need.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, they don't really fill it up that much. They don't want those cars banging into each other. But there are, but there are, you know, there, there's a few demo cars there.
Mm-huh.
And they, they show a few display cars.
Okay. Um, I think, I've got a list of things that, that need to be addressed. And actually, one of the things that really needs to be addressed, uh, six eighteen, six one one eight, use regulations in P-zones.
I have it right here.
Two, paragraph two, or paragraph A, two subsection C.
Yeah, five-foot screening.
Keep going. Where any lot in a P-zone abuts upon a residence zone, there shall be no access drive or parking spaces within fifteen feet from such residence zone, and the intervening space shall be suitably planted and screened, screened the non-residential uses from the residence.
Okay.
I'm looking at the plan, and I see five feet from the property line to a curb.
Right.
And I drew with a scale, fifteen feet in, and it goes right through all of the parking spaces. I don't see the fifteen-foot setback as required by that section.
You will in the next plan.
Okay.
Mr. Maitland. That was a real, true Richard comment.
Thank you, but I guess
You're very welcome.
You have good eyes.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, getting back to what I said in the beginning.
Okay.
Fifteen feet. So if I do fifteen feet in the back
Mm-hmm.
Pushes all those parking spaces.
Well, that's another reason we're getting rid of that building.
The fifteen feet on the side gets rid of the building. It goes right through the middle of it, because that's residences
No, I get it, I get it.
So with that, that's the first thing to start with, it would seem. Okay, we talked about why it's needed, employees, service and inventory.
Yes.
Inventory. And I'm talking, thinking to myself, are you parking inventory, or is it potential to park inventory on this overnight? Or do all the cars go back inside at night?
Um, I'll ask the question, because some of their inventory is, is used cars, some is new, some are new. They have used cars also, but I'll ask the question.
That's a hundred thousand
They're so expensive, used cars.
I don't know if I leave my cars
Okay. We talked about actually the master plan. I'd like to see
They, they take most of their inventory in.
Yeah.
I would expect that.
Master plan of the site, this site actually include the dealership, and actually would like to include the vacant lot of the gun store. I'm actually looking at a, uh, aerial photograph. It actually shows cars parked all over that site as well.
Yes.
Okay, so I really, I wanna get a grasp of what's going on
Very thin air, yeah.
Okay. Um, Landscape, lighting, all of that goes off to A R C?
Yeah.
After you revise the site plan.
Okay.
Uh, the fifteen-foot setback.
May I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
Just ask a question? So should we go to A R C, we're gonna revise the site plan, taking into account your comments? And go to A R C with that? I guess that's what you're, you're looking for everybody to do now.
Yeah, because I'd like to have them opine on what you're doing for landscaping, fencing, lighting the whole yard.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, you can see the master plan in terms of where we're gonna do work.
Mm-huh.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to knock down that building for sure now and
Okay, um, now, I don't know, we, I don't think we, we were provided with the easement language for that, that area. If it's gonna stay, if you
Yeah, it's like one para, it's not even, it's
Okay.
Few sentences, but it has to stay for the benefit of it.
Yes, to get into that, okay. Because it's actually two separate lots, even though it's in the same ownership.
But not in the same ownership. This is in a total separate ownership.
No, 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 the, when the P-zone, P-zone
These lots are gonna merge.
Yes, and that will be
We actually have them in separate ownership. Tessie, just use the microphone.
Okay.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
But she says
Okay.
Okay.
We had talked actually about the drainage.
Thank you.
Monsieur
What's Conservation's comments on the drainage?
Yeah, Tony, um
Well, I think they're actually, I think, understanding, they had, they had issues about drainage. I think the site plan is going to change drastically, because you've got
I think with the fifteen feet, that's going to
That's gonna allow you to give
We may be able to give, uh, my good friend Alexandra
Some fil, some filtration.
Uh, something.
Right.
She was That I'll let Mr. DeAngelo work on.
Okay, address her, because she was, had issues about, because it's such a large asphalt area. She wanted to make sure that anything that was collecting there didn't drain off and just into the catch basins and go all over.
No, I, I get that. That's part of Tony's job.
Well, it's also that it's gonna get clogged if there's not pre-treatment.
Right, I guess it's all that oil leaking out of the Ferraris.
No, it's the, it's just, you know, the nature of the beast.
Okay. Um, you guys, anybody else have any other issues?
And then, um
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. Um, and you had stated actually in the very first comment that you'd made, that part of the reason you wanted to do this is to make the site more compliant?
No, I said functionally, the area, it would make it more compliant.
Okay, functionally, which is a key distinction. Okay, right, and the reason that you're saying not legally
Well, a good example for that is, no, go ahead, I cut you off.
Is subsection E of six one eighteen that says it can't be used to meet the parking
Absolutely, and that was Richard's way of getting around that, the, the regulation for Lamborghini, basically. So functionally, functionally, works consistent with the regulations. Legally, you, you did something you'd never do if that P-zone weren't there, and that was cut down the number of required parking spaces. We all know what you did.
So I think
So functionally, ironically, but we're, but we're making a, functionally, that site perform better by having this P-zone.
Right, and one of the things that was so great about that other site was the, the significant landscaping additions to what had been there.
Exactly.
And along those lines, since you don't quite know what you're gonna do with this property, and, and it's just a functional increase, as opposed to a legal increase. And obviously, you've got parking laid out there now, and you've got residences, but to, to the commission's point about what's gonna happen in the future, I think one thing to think about might be to make an even more, a larger buffer, particularly if
Well, that's the fifteen feet.
No, I'm talking about larger than that, because
No, we can't do larger than that, because
You won't have any place to park.
Well, I didn't say, I didn't say my point yet. I didn't, I didn't get my point out.
You took a breath.
Yeah. Because what's, what you have here now is you've got stuff in the way. You've got the residents in the way, you've got parking for residents, whatever. Eventually, that could all go, and then you've got the throughway, so to speak, from here all the way to Edgewood, which, as you said, that's a GB zone, so that can be very intense. And now you've got a P-zone, and it's, it's possible that, that one could come back in the future and pack the cars in, because now it's a P-zone. So what I'm saying is, it might be, might behoove the commission at this point to work with you to get, to get a significant buffer in that area beyond the fifteen feet. Just like we did, just like we did on the other property, where there was significant landscape improvements there.
I didn't think it was more than fifteen feet. I thought the fifteen feet was exactly what, what you made them do.
Right, but what we did was it made them come around, and there was improvements along the side of the building, so it was
We don't have any plan.
There's no room to do that, obviously, on this site, because the building goes right to the roadway.
Right, so we're gonna come up with a robust, ro, robust, robust, thank you, Mr. Yaski, robust plan on, on, but which would both be in front of the building, which is five feet, in front of the property on the street. But in terms of the, what's the south and the east, which are residential neighbors, we are going to have a robust, robust screening plan.
At this time, it would be nice to get something on Putnam Avenue at the dealers in terms of, instead of a sea of asphalt, if we could get a tree or something.
No, I doubt that's gonna happen there.
Just saying, I would look at it.
And I don't actually think you have a choice, because once you get beyond ten parking spaces, you have to put landscaping strips in
But not on the existing
Per one sixty-two.
Yeah.
No, once the residences, that's what I'm saying, so you've got the residences there now, but in the future, and you, you've got more than ten parking spaces there, obviously. So, and then you've got buildings that are being used for residential purposes. So what, what's in front of that residence over there, the one that's staying? I mean, is that all asphalt, or what is that there?
It's all asphalt. There's a fellow that previously owned it, ran a business really out of there. Um, forget the kind of business he had, but he really ran a business. He paved everything. It's been paved that way for, God, I don't know.
Again, to the point that it's, it's not really being used as residentially then, it's being used fully as a parking lot, right? So in which case, you should be putting in the, the, the
Well, I, I think
Plantings.
I, I think what we're saying
We're gonna come up with a plant, Mr. Pop
A landscape plan for Mr. Pop, and we need to look at the whole property.
And see if you could accomplish some pre-treatment.
And, and, and just, again, we're, we're And, and, and just, again, we're, we're giving ideas, but until we see a real plan, a real parking.
Well, we needed to get your comments.
Oh, you got it.
Fortuitous that Mr. Pop experienced Lamborghini, so I'm going to, clearly going to tell him to
I think.
Use that experience in coming up with his plan.
Right. But I think the comment I just heard was it's more than just a fifteen foot buffer.
I, I, I don't, I'm trying to look at it as, as a whole, because the P is now getting tied in with the front building, and I'm trying to get something on the front building from West Putnam, whether it's one tree or one, some kind of buffer.
One tree is going to.
Well, but if you look at it now, you can roll bowling balls all the way down from Ferrari to Alpha. And then, oh, and I missed, what's in between them? No, there's another dealer, McLaren, right?
McLaren's on the other side. You're talking about, you're talking about the, the Alpha, the Alpha dealer.
Yeah.
I think, Mr. Tessie, what am I hearing?
You know, you can't throw the baby out the bathwater. You're going to ask, and the client's not going to give up rights that he has now, which are so important for car dealers for visual exposure.
Right, but I think.
That'll be your decision if they don't like the site plan, if the commissioners don't like the site plan when you come back.
It's fine. If you squeeze it too much, you're right, then, then we'll.
Then the commission won't like the site plan, and that'll be a decision that you've made.
No, that'll be a decision you made.
Yeah, but if the commission is telling you.
You're entitled to make it. You've got a lot of discretion in changing the zone.
The commission is telling you what they're looking for, and you've got a choice of what you're going to submit.
Well, the client's got a business decision to make.
May I ask the public to?
Before, before we go.
Oh.
Can you go back to the property owners and just relate to what we're talking about in terms of actually the, the whole sites, all three sites, and looking at that? Because when I, when I see P zone, it's, in this type of situation, it's directly related to the function of the use of the dealership. And I think there's a potential here to make this a really, really nice space, really nice dealership, and not just a sea of asphalt. Okay? It's really nice to have really wonderful cars out front, but, but, you know, would they be, you know, it's like, would they be amenable to actually, you know, putting some holes in that asphalt in the front yard, plant a few trees or something? Give us what's going on with that, that thing. Right. Those kind of things. Just a, a little bit more.
Sidewalk where? Sorry, Mr. Levy.
I know, like, along West Putnam.
There is, well, there's, there's paint.
Again, I'm tired of.
Well.
Well, see, there, there it is. It's, it's just painted on the asphalt.
Well, that's.
It's kind of, you, you've paved over the front yard. Will.
It was paved over ninety years ago.
Could they now, because they have a preeminent dealership, can they actually just add a tree or two? Make it nicer for everybody else?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I just don't see them putting in a forest there.
No, no, I'm not talking about a forest, because you've got to get to see the cars. But at the same time, there's nothing there. So if you get in at least two trees, at least it's two trees.
No, I, I like trees.
Or some grass.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we could get the public, please, to, um, Mr. Tessie.
Sure.
Um, I believe, um, Mr. McTeague is one person, or Mrs. McTeague. And I was guessing, and then there's someone else, and you're also for this application? Okay, you're all together. If you'll identify yourselves for the court reporter, though.
Jane McTeague.
And Michael McTeague, correct?
No, that's, that is.
Michael McTeague is back there. Jane McTeague.
Yes, I'm Dr. Doug Massey. I live on Livingston Place as well.
Okay, great. Okay, so Mr. Massey and Mrs. McTeague. Please go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, when, when Jane received the letter about the zoning change, we became very alarmed about this. Uh, we both have lived on Livingston Place for over fifty years. We have seen the neighborhood change radically over that time. Uh, we all get along with Miller Motors. It has nothing to do with personal relationships. However, right now, you changing this to a P zone, we're very afraid about the precedent that you're going to set. What's happened in fifty years? It wasn't just Miller Motors. They bought Mrs. Accardo's house across, across Livingston Place, turned it into McLaren. They bought the gun shop, as you, you know, that building's a beautiful building, expanded that. They took out Horse Neck Tavern, took that down, put it in the Alfa Romeo dealership. Now they have cars and parking from Edgewood Avenue all the way almost to Fox Lane. Behind McLaren, they rent, um, they leased property from, um, was it, oh, Mrs. Vitka.
Mrs. Vitka.
So that they could park cars. The property that they now own next to Jane's, um, which was, um, a Bohax, right now, they park cars there and in this whole area behind McLaren twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, all the time. So what is going to happen when you expand their parking and we get another fifty cars? It's already causing, excuse me, severe traffic problems. Their delivery trucks park on Livingston Place in front of the dealership, unload cars, all the, un, well, usually if they park on the post road, the policemen stop them eventually, but that's where they come to Livingston Place and unload all their cars. We have car carriers, we have single, you know, tow truck people there, and if there's a tow truck type of vehicle parked by their garage door, a Livingston Place, and then they get a delivery from W B Mason, no one can get through. On Livingston Place, right. It creates such a traffic problem all the time. Um, we have eight, at least eight of their employees parking on Livingston Place.
On, on the road?
On the road, not on Miller Motor property. So, when you look at Miller Motors', uh, partnership, how much they've expanded over the last twenty, thirty years, we go, what do they need more parking for? They also own across the post road, Route One. They've bought all the property from the Route Pencil Company down to, um, Dunkin' Donuts. I know there's parking behind Route Pencil Company. Whether they utilize it at this point or not, I have no idea. Um, and then we've got the other two color, car dealerships. We have Acura, and we have BMW. So our whole area is so inundated with car dealerships, traffic, mechanics testing their cars up and down the streets. The other night, we got, um, Miller Motors got a delivery at ten o'clock at night. That's Saturday night. We videotaped it.
A delivery of what?
Vehicle.
And how was that delivery made?
Um, the truck pulled up right on Livingston Place by their, um, garage entrance.
A car carrier or?
Car carrier. No, no, uh.
A flatbed.
Like a flatbed.
Covered flatbed, okay.
Right. Because we saw the flashing lights. So we were one, we thought maybe there was a burglary, or a, you know, it was a more of an emergency situation, but it was a delivery. So, this is what we've seen happen, okay? And seeing this area change into more parking, another forty or fifty cars, we, we don't think the neighborhood can handle it. So, if at all possible, we would love to see you do a traffic study of the area before you allow more cars to be parked in the area. Other things that go on here is what's going to happen to all the water. Right now, water comes out of the drains. If we get a heavy rain, comes off the Miller Motors building, comes along the street, goes in the first, um, catch basin, which is between McTeague's house and the property that they're looking to tear the house down. What doesn't get picked up there runs down in front of my house at twenty-three Livingston Place, and then runs down the line to, um, the intersection of Hamilton Avenue and Livingston Place. If we get a two to three inch rain, the manhole at the bottom of Livingston Place pops up from all the water. And we have to call the police, and they come and reorganize it. Um, I don't know if you know this or not, but there's also a natural aquifer that runs from Miller Motors underneath the Bohax House, underneath Jane's House, underneath seventeen Livingston Place, and then goes down. So there's a lot of water situat-, you know, contingencies here that should be taken into consideration, because we know the gentlemen are going to be washing their cars. Hopefully, they won't be changing oil or doing any of that kind of thing in this new parking area, all right? So, and what's going to happen to all the snow and ice and, you know, and ice melt and everything? Where are they going to put this stuff? So these are some of our concerns, and recently, we went, went to Zillow, and we noticed that Jane's property has gone down. Value has gone down. In the last month. I'm not blaming Miller Motors, but it's an interesting coincidence that here are these projects, more and more car dealerships infringing upon residential areas, and our property values are starting to go down. So, we're asking, would you please consider the residents here and what we go through on a daily basis? And we're available for any questions you may have.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so, Dr. Massey, um, they're going to come back with a different plan now, because they have to kind of move things around. So there's going to be more of a landscape buffer between your house and the parking zone. And I think you've probably heard, we're looking for a larger plan to, so we can really get a sense of what's going on with all of the site. Um, the civil engineer's going to go back as part of that redesign. He has a drainage design already, uh, to make sure that, in as part of the town's drainage manual, every drop of rain that's on that site is accounted for and gets to the right place. I think if you have issues with the drainage system that's in the street, and you're saying it's bubbling up, that's something you may want to address with the Department of Public Works, because there's maybe something that's actually off-site, down, down farther.
Well, in a normal rainfall, we don't have that, but when we have these heavy rains.
But normally, the nor, heavy rain, if it's bubbling up in the street, there may be an issue farther down that they need to address. Okay, maybe they don't know about it, so. They're, they will be back. I'm not too sure when. You can check with staff on that, to come back to actually take a look at that. They're actually going to the Architectural Review Committee at A R C to look at the landscaping and whatever lighting they're proposing, that kind of thing, so the.
Yeah, because lighting was another big concern, because.
We were concerned about the lighting as well.
At night, now, if you go by late at night and you look at McLaren, it's lit up like a Christmas tree.
Yeah, we know, and we know that where there've been residential neighbors next to businesses that light stuff at night, that it's a problem. So we specifically, we raised it, as you noted, you weren't there yesterday, I think.
No, I was not there yesterday.
You were. Um, we raised it yesterday, because we were concerned about the lighting. So they will review that. Um, but you've also given us some other stuff to think about.
Well, because we look at a big plan, too.
Yeah.
And we, we've known Livingston Place builders when they were Franco's, they're, um, Richie Criskie's getting a little older.
Yeah.
So, in the big plan, I suspect that Rich.
His kids are there, right?
Richard might want to sell the property.
Right.
Um, it is commercially zoned, I believe. Um, and I wouldn't think that Miller Motors would not want to buy that property. So here we go, with more expansion, more cars, more traffic. It's a big problem.
Just a question that, uh, to come up, listening to, uh, your thoughts. Do you think if employees who are now parking on the street, parked in this new lot, that would help the neighborhood? And further if.
Liam, yeah.
If this parking lot were adequate to offload from the car carriers within the parking lot as opposed to being on the street, that that would also be a benefit to the neighborhood?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. As I understand it, they're not supposed to be unloading in the street as it is with the zoning regulations. They do have an area in the front of the building, um, that they possibly could unload, but it's usually occupied by cars.
Right.
Yeah. Not, not employee cars, but visitors and their display cars.
Display cars.
At least fifteen of them, that would be out there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Uh, Mrs. McTeague, just a quick question. This, the site as it is now, um, on the other side of the house they're carrying down.
I have pictures.
Is that, is it?
We've been looking at them. That's what we were, Mr. Fox and I were just looking at all pictures.
Mr. McRae, if I could just interject for one quick second. In fact, the, the photo that you've already shown the commission, that does need to be submitted as part of the record, so you're going to have to send it to Mr. LaRoe. So just any photos that you're showing need to, need to be submitted.
All right. I just have a whole bunch of different ones, but. I can email them. Okay.
They will share all the, no, he means me. I forgot. I get all involved and forget stuff. Um, yeah, they will share all the photos with us, and then they'll be part of the public record, which is what you want to have, so.
This is McLaren. This is how they look, and their cameras are all over the place.
And the McLaren lighting wouldn't have been what we do now.
And this is the other parking lot that's behind, where the one with the parking lot.
If you would show it, you really should just send it, because.
Send it, because, yeah.
Send it, and then it goes into the public record, and then we have it for the next meeting, because it'll be distributed to us.
All right.
And then they, they will have all the pictures, and we'll be able to look at it as Mr. Tessie is talking to us about it.
You mentioned on Saturday night there was a delivery. Was that one car on a flatbed, probably?
It was just one car, as we know.
It looks like a tow truck.
Yeah, now, but you've actually seen car carriers with multiple cars on it, on Livingston, being unloaded?
Yes, sir. Yes.
It's illegal, isn't it?
Yeah.
Totally illegal. There's one spot in town you can do that, and that's not the spot.
We understand that, and we've reported the, the incidents to the police department, but by the time they get there, the car carrier's already gone, has unloaded his cars, and they're gone.
What, what were they unloading? Whose, whose cars were they unloading? Better question.
Uh, some, they have unloaded Ferraris, Maseratis.
Of a car carrier.
BMWs, off a car carrier. Um, not so much Acura anymore. Uh, they tend to pull up on their own little sidewalk on Post Road. And Independence, that, you know, so. Because we're the only, one of the only thoroughfares from Hamilton Avenue to the Post Road, from the throughway.
Totally, no.
Yeah, you, you know, so we get a lot of traffic.
And to be honest, we've been working on this issue for a long time.
Long time, I know.
And it just.
Well.
Okay.
Any questions?
I don't think so, sir.
Thank you for your time, letting us speak.
Thanks.
So we will be leaving both applications, eight and nine, open. Um, actually, there's, um, nine is regular meeting. Is that all right? That it's, we don't really need the record for it? Okay.
Just wanted to respond to a couple of points.
Oh, okay.
Clarify a few things. Probably what they experienced, which is one of the problems, because I talked to Mr. Cobbleman about it. It's customers, you know, bringing cars, but that was a tow truck, makes sense.
It looked like a tow truck, yeah.
So what happens is, the customers will bring cars.
It would look like a flatbed.
Uh, yeah, I've never heard of a, I'm not going to dispute them, because they live there, you know.
Right.
But Miller wouldn't, Miller generally, not generally, well, generally, it only takes cars in, you know, one at a time. If there is a car carrier, it's on Edgewood Drive, as you know, uh, where you have, in that, when you have that space, that's used by the car dealers. It's supposed to be used by the car dealers.
You might want to confirm that, and the, and, and just also confirm with them.
I can explain to you that when Miller brings cars in and has control of the situation, where, where they've been bringing them into is actually the McLaren dealer.
Right.
That's where they bring them, because it's on site. So I think, and I told Richard, he said, you know, he's, he's, they try to monitor with the clients, but these tow, tow truck guys come and they do whatever the heck they want. But they're supposed to go onto Mc, he told them all to go into McLaren, so it's off-street. So we'll have to do a better job of taking care of that for when it happens. When, when, but it's always customers or tow truck guys bringing, and that's, I guess they break a lot, these Italian cars.
So the McLaren, though, that's, that's where the Horse Neck Tavern was, right?
No, McLaren is, McLaren is Alfa Romeo. Yeah, it's Alfa, it's Alfa Romeo.
Oh, okay, okay. So, but, but he owns where the Horse Neck was, right?
He doesn't own it. It's leased.
Okay, because that had the restriction that they were only going to have a certain type of delivery vehicle.
Yeah, it's fine. They, they.
So where, where are these guys supposed to be delivering vehicles?
Well, most of them come in a flatbed, and they, they, most of them come in by way of flatbed. They all do.
Right, and where are they instructed, and where do you, where does the commission tell them to, to unload?
On this other street for either Maserati or for, um, um.
Ferrari.
Ferrari, thank you. Uh, they have them pull into McLaren, because that's convenient, and the garage is right across from McLaren, as you all know, that's on the upper level. Maybe you don't all know. So that's what they do, and that's safe. They control that. They can turn it around. It's off-street.
So then how does it go so wrong, then?
Because sometimes these tow truck operators or a client who has brought his flatbed up, and by the way, my guess is that the people that were offloading, that they see from time to time, it's probably seasonal, off a, off a carrier, are probably cars being shipped like from Florida back up here or something like that.
So then those guys should go to the Edgewood site.
They should, but they don't know, because these are people that customers hire. They park anywhere.
So those aren't, those aren't...
That's not regular. That, 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 those aren't dealer cars, no. Those are customer cars. Those are all customer cars. Yeah, they're customer cars. So we can adjust that, and I, and I totally appreciate everything.
So you could get a...
But he owns McLaren also, or is he own McLaren, or that's just a nice relationship? No, own McLaren.
He owns McLaren?
Yeah, that's owned by Miller, that's owned by the Miller Group.
Okay, so then maybe there's a, there's an opportunity here on the, on the McLaren site to stripe or to do some sort of visual loading area?
That's what they do now. They, they have, it's, it's opening up. It's, it's the problem of getting customers, if somebody's not looking, you don't know what you do, like a tow truck operator who's told to bring it to Miller Motor Cars, they, tow truck operators are tow truck operators. It's about better monitoring and educating them, but sometimes if they come in after off-hours, there's nobody there to tell them what to do. And so they'll, they'll make it convenient on themselves. I don't think it's a regular thing. I don't think it's that bad. And the other point, but, but I appreciate, appreciate again, everything they're, they're saying. Um, but, look, this is what's going on. This site does not have any parking, so the employees park where they're legally allowed, or maybe not legally allowed to park. So they probably do park on the street, it makes total sense. This will help alleviate the issue. And so far as the Trep property, it's another point. The Trep property surrounds the, uh, McLaren property. It's actually an L-shaped property. Part on Livingston, part on West Platteville. And Miller rents that on a month-to-month basis. You know, that's one of the problems for Miller. It does need those, an employee parked there. But the problem is, it's month-to-month, and that really goes into the equation of trying to have parking areas established that they actually have control of over a long period of time. The nature of the beast, you've heard it in connection with other applications.
So that's our sixes, as well.
So to, to the need, to the, um, public commentary about just cars everywhere, and, you know, dealerships popping up all over the place and whatnot.
Well, there really not, dealerships are popping up all over the place, but the need for parking is popping up.
Well, I mean, Horse Neck to a dealer, and this is...
Horse Neck was made a dealership, probably ten years ago or so.
Right, but again, it's, you can't deny the facts. It's a lot more than it was in terms of the car dealership world. I mean, there's arguments to be made, restaurants to car, to a high-end car dealer, whatever, but it's still a car dealership.
Yeah.
Where I'm going with this is, if, if the, if the Miller owns the other side of the street, there's a very, very awkward intersection with the Post Road in Livingston. Is there any opportunity at this point to adjust that intersection such that cars can actually turn more easily onto the road? Miller building is right on the road. There's not a lot of room there at all. Is there an opportunity to at least, at least improve the intersection?
I've never heard anybody say it, really. The problem with that intersection is the, main problem with that intersection, because we have sightlines, we have very good sightlines, is the volume of traffic on West Putnam Avenue.
Well, it's also where trucks come from ninety-five to get on to, um, we've had testimony from the Post Road fireworks application, that that's one of the ways that trucks get to ninety-five. So there's a lot of...
Livingston?
Yeah, to go down.
You guys know better than me.
I mean, it's Liv- Livingston and Edgewood are the two routes from the Post Road.
Those are the two, well, there's Prospect Street.
I take Prospect, but I also take Livingston, when I cut down.
I think that the point...
I do, too, but I don't have a truck.
Is surrounding this building, you know, we had a little control over Alfa, we had control over Miller, but you've got two pieces, which are basically unmaintained parking lots that we never got to see.
Right.
And so, when you look at it from our perspective, it's a free-for-all. And from, and from the neighborhood, it's a free-for-all.
That's what's happened, yeah, with parking, with, with the people who have, have lots, what you've seen, who have lots on West Putnam Avenue, it is what you've seen, and it's the whole stretch of West Putnam and Chathamany. Anybody who has a vac-, anybody who has a vacant lot, or, or an empty parking lot...
They rent it out.
The car dealers, and that's because of all the pressure the manufacturers put on them to take inventory.
I, I agree. I'm not, my comment was, those vacant lots don't come in front of us to get site plans, and they pave them or put gravel sideline, just lot line to lot line, and it doesn't help these type of applications, because...
Well, I, no, I think it's a good conversation.
Okay. So we'll have it next time.
Yep.
Just trying to fill time to get to midnight for you, if you get that.
No, no, we're not doing that tonight.
You make us stay longer.
Okay. Alright, let's, let's move, move to deny. No. Okay, so we have, um, and so ends the public hearing and the regular meeting, and we're gonna leave this open. Bye. So we have two decisions before us. Well, the first one is quick, which is that yesterday, we, I just told you a few minutes ago, yesterday we interviewed Leander Kruger for the A R C, and, um...
Can you first take a vote to get into that?
Why, Kim?
Right, we, I'm adding a, just, an item to the agenda.
So this is your request to keep...
Add an item to the agenda. So, okay, I would like to add an item to the agenda. Do I need to get a vote on that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so therefore, that being voted, um, we interviewed Leander Kruger yesterday, and I would propose that, uh, we nominate her for A R C. Um, shall Mr. Mackey make that?
May, we have a good discussion.
Sure. So it's not, it's not specific to Leander, but it is specific to she, to this person being the twelfth A R C member? Okay, so, but can, can we talk about the procedure and process, or would you rather do that at another time?
Well, I think we're gonna be down another person, so I think we're gonna have another vacancy soon, so I wasn't concerned about us being to the full, but go ahead, if there's a...
I mean, it really has to do with the sign committee versus the, the, can we talk...
The hope is that...
Only because she's an architect.
Right.
And so, just from staff standpoint, the easiest thing to do is to have the two meetings a month, which we have now, and have the signs be at the beginning of those two meetings. Or if the, if the twelve members want to have a subcommittee, fine, as opposed to having an additional five people, which was a discussion had at one point?
No, two people. That there would be two people, what the commission had agreed to, what we agreed to the last time we talked about it, was that we would have two people from regular A R C, and then two people from, who only do signs initially. And that those two people from regular A R C would rotate, so that they don't have to go to three meetings a month. And that's what we had agreed to, that we would bring in two people to just do signs, and we all talked about it.
Is this, is this a logistical issue?
Yeah, it's a logistical issue from a couple of standpoints. One, that decision requires, then, making...
That charter, it's us, we wrote it.
Yeah, ma-, which then requires you to rewrite it, basically, and to have that meeting.
Actually, but actually, the, the way that our enabling thing for them is written is, I think that they can create committees anytime they want.
Right, but you're adding three more people that, so it's...
Their own, those people we're adding are only gonna be on that committee.
I know, but what you're doing is you're creating a, you're creating another A R C. You can call them Sign A R C, or whatever, but if you kept it in the twelve, no problem. But if you go over the twelve, it's an issue.
But we empowered them. In their resolution, it allows them to create a committee.
Which they can do, but not with people beyond the twelve.
Right, so I think it's...
A committee of themselves.
So they could have eight...
I don't think we're ever gonna get them to agree to anything else. That was the compromise we reached with them, this thing of having a separate sub-sign committee. So I don't know why the question came back up, cause we agreed this.
I don't think the A R C is aware of this, number one.
Isn't that separate from...
Yeah, we talked to them about it.
But I guess we can't vote on it, but my comment is, if they had eight full members and four sign, at least then you were keeping within the twelve, and you've got enough, I mean, Nick, you tell me, is that enough on full A R C?
Okay, so, I think actually, the, the, the most efficient way to do, go about this is, you have twelve members, okay? They have the purview through the charter, um, they're chartering to create a subcommittee. So they can create a subcommittee for signage. I, I think it's actually how, how we did two years ago. It was the subcommittee of, of members who met separately, and then, I guess now we would have that, same kinda situation, and then, um, uh, the regular meetings, the two regular meetings, okay? I think it's up to them, if they wanna create that subcommittee. Um, it's a lot more time-consuming, and I think actually, I understand the logistical nightmare that this could create. I think actually, having just two regular meetings that encompasses all of it at one time, might be a more efficient way to go, now that you've got all twelve members on there. Um, it also has an issue that actually, when it comes to signage, you really wanna kind of put it together in terms of actually, like, for example, in a new building, you wanna make sure that the signs of the new building are actually included as part of the review. Don't do it as a separate thing, so, um, I know we had talked about this, and I'm not too sure if we did have any kind of agreement, but I think actually...
I think we had reached consensus.
If, right now, actually, yes, if they wanna do a, a subcommittee, they can. That's their purview. But I think actually, just having the two regular meetings with all applications signage included on those two meetings would be the most efficient way to go. One for them, and also, I think, for staff as well. And I think actually, staff, making sure staff doesn't get inundated with, you know, three different separate meetings, plus regular duties.
We will revisit that, but I recall them having agreed to having a subcommittee, and that we all agreed to it. And I know we've had the discussion when Contadino came in, and, um, the last person we renewed, with Rhonda.
Yeah, I, we've obviously discussed it, yeah.
We've talked to Hein, and we've talked to Hein, and they've all agreed, and to La Balbo, and we've all talked about it. We can revisit it. But in any event, I think we're gonna have another opening soon.
Okay, the, I mean, the, the reason it's coming up with this right now is that if, whether, yeah, I mean, she's an architect, which is great, and I think that's, you know, it's Architectural Review Committee, and she's clearly very talented and whatnot, but it's, is that the right person when you're talking about this sign business, because you wanna have a sign person?
But it's the right person, the signs are a tactical issue. This is the right person strategically for A R C, because it's a person who communicates well, and is articulate, and brings a different perspective, and diversifies them a little more. And so for me, strategically, this is a good call. That's why I've been pressing so hard to get a switch in how they communicate with the public, communicate their thoughts, to get people who are better geared towards that.
Okay.
That's what we've been trying to find. Strategically, we need them to be effective with the applicants more than anything else.
So where are we landing post that decision on this, on this, uh...
So for me, I'm pushing...
Because, because I think...
That they can figure it out. They came to us, and they said, "We're two people short, and we don't know what we're gonna do without those two people." That was the first thing they said to us, when they met with us. "We're desperate for two people." Well, we've now given them two people.
Right.
That's where I come out. And we've given them people who have interpersonal skills, and who can get applicant respect. And that's why I've pushed so hard for this, cause I think we need to communicate with the public. We need to have good interface. And we'll get the signage thing going. I thought we had agreed to the subcommittee, to be honest, and I think that's what they have expressed to us, they wanna do.
And if they wanna have the subcommittee of their twelve, then that's completely fine, but if it's, if they're going beyond that, then we need to have another, formal action by the commission.
The concept we talked about is that in the future, we consider having two people who only do signage initially, and then move up to doing the rest.
Which, yeah, I, I can't, I don't wanna belabor that, on, on early night. Um, but, Nick, I think, from my observation, having a group of twelve overseeing a big application makes it more cumbersome.
Alright, so we're gonna do twelve.
It's gotta be more efficient.
Okay.
It's gotta be more efficient, and I'd rather see eight people...
Okay.
Focus on the applications, and four focus on signs, and...
But I do think this is...
Or, but I'm confused now, because I understand we're staying with the twelve unless you take action to, to make more, but before, Nick was saying that if they wanna do the subcommittee, they can. So you're, you're saying that also, or not?
It, I think it's, it's, it's in their, it's in their charter language, that they wanna form a subcommittee for almost anything. If they wanted to form a subcommittee, for example, for landscaping, or if they wanted to form a subcommittee to look at regulations or something like that, they can. It's in their purview. If they wanna do it for signs, they can do that.
Right.
But I think actually, right now, where we are, I don't find it necessary, or very efficient, actually, to have a separate membership of just sign committee, to review just signs.
Right, and to your other point before...
It's just the twelve in two meetings a month.
If, if that is what they decide to do, then I'm, then we're gonna have to figure out manage, you know, management of the staff, staffing levels for that, because that's under existing conditions. That's not gonna work out.
Okay, got it.
That's, that's the biggest issue, is that actually...
Cause you make it work, but there's gonna obviously have to be a change to how things are gonna, cause another agenda, another, you know...
And that's never come up, okay, so that's never come up in the discussions we've had on it, and you may have not been there that day, because...
Yeah, I don't really, I do remember discussing, having these discussions, generally speaking, but I don't remember there being a definitive decision.
Okay. Stop being so bossy pants. Let us talk about stuff.
Okay, so where we are is twelve members, two meetings a month, and they can follow their charter language as they deem necessary.
Thank you, okay.
Okay.
So getting back to where we're, we're...
So we're, you're making a motion?
Okay.
So that ends the discussion on the motion?
Okay, I nominate Leander Kruger, uh, to, uh, serve on the Architectural Review Committee for a term of three years?
They say it's four.
Is it four years or three years?
For a term.
I thought it's two. I think Katie...
I think it's four years.
I've been told it's four, so just, I...
Four years, done.
For the, a lot of terms, for the a lot of terms.
Alright, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Second, sorry.
Aye.
Fox did.
Okay, now we're gonna do the Saint Hims.
Okay.
There's only one church.
Ready? For the application, P L P Z two thousand eighteen...
Victoria, resolution on the floor. Go ahead.
P L P Z two thousand eighteen, uh, five-two-one, and P L P Z two thousand eighteen, uh, five-two-two, for final site plan and special permit, reconfigure church building, um, north access by eighty-eight, adding an eighty-eight ramp, um, at one thirty, uh, ten thirty-four North Street in the R twenty zone. Motion to approve said application, understanding that the Town Engineering Division has reviewed and approved the drainage as proposed. Applicant is to, uh, work with the Conservation Commission on, uh, replacement of, uh, removed hemlocks, um, with a native species. Uh, applicant is to address the A R C, uh, issues prior to zoning permit. Uh... A seating chart has been provided for staff review. Um, and I think, uh, any other